This meeting order, this is our final current meeting. Regular meeting, we've got the, uh... We don't have the roll call and flag delete. Okay, I hear a motion that we approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Second. Any questions, any discussion? All right, let's vote on it. Mr. Burst.
Is he still on?
Mr. Burst, he with us?
He might have hung up. I thought it was turning something, click.
Okay, he might not know that started the meeting, started. Okay, Mr. Pope, uh, Mr. Lucas, Mr. Burner, chair votes out. All right. Okay, we're on the consent items. Approval of meetings minute for August 22, work session, public hearing, regular meeting, work session and call meeting. We can vote on all of them at once, can't we?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I hear a motion.
I make a motion to accept the approval of the minutes, meeting minutes for August 22, work session August 8, public hearing August 8, regular meeting August 8, work session August 29, and call meeting August 29.
Okay. Got a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on it? If not, let's vote.
I've got one thing on it.
Yeah.
Mr. Manager, whenever you're doing the minutes, are you getting word by word or on this?
I'm not, it's not verbatim, no, sir. It's more of a summary of it, a lot of, but most cases I do try to capture everything I can, I can hear and put it in the minutes.
Does it need to be verbatim?
No, sir. No, sir, but I do, the comments and such, that actually helps to explain and understand the topic, especially if somebody's doing research or trying to find out background, I always try to make sure I include.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
I was reading over the minutes the other day, there's some stuff that was left out, I was just curious.
Oh, okay.
Okay, is that all? All right, let's vote on it. Mr. Burst.
Aye.
Mr. Pope, uh, Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Burner.
Aye.
Chair votes out, all right, approve the minutes. Okay, agenda items now, bid proposal award proposal properties auditing services. Now... Let's see which one that is.
Madam Lord, could you expound on this a little bit more in depth for us, please? Cause it's, I'm not totally understanding, cause I just went through and awarded.
I'll be glad to, thank you Commissioner. So, as Ms. Lankin referenced earlier, the Department of Revenue comes down every year and they review certain numbers, and when they reviewed Ware County's numbers, they were out of the percentage that they should have been within on the coefficient of dispersion, which is the COD number. And that is unrelated to personal property, that's related to real property. But because of that issue, we had the option, we being the commissioners or the county, had the option to either pay a very hefty fine or enter into a consent order that says we will take these steps in lieu of paying this fine every year while we are out of the percentage. And so you as a commission chose to enter into the consent order. Previously, as part of that consent order, the county contracted with a group called GMAAS, and they're doing certain work with regard to real property, and that was what Mr. Carter was referencing earlier, that they'd been working on the schedules, boots on the ground next week, all those different sorts of things. What's before you tonight is, we sent out an RFP, request for proposal, to see what companies there are out there that can provide the services required in the consent order for personal property. And there was only one response, that was from Trailer Business Services. Now, Trailer is, as Mr. Carter referenced, and I do personally work with them in a number of our counties, I think he said they're in about 40 counties, and a lot of those are in South Georgia. And they were previously in Ware County about a decade ago. So what they do is, they come in and audit personal property accounts. Now, we referenced earlier, this is not going to look in private storage sheds, you know, these are commercial accounts, they have certain accounts of different sizes, and they choose, okay, we are going to randomly select 10 accounts in, you know, this size account number, we'll select 20 from here, you know, those sorts of things. And the county will pay per account, there are different costs, obviously the larger accounts are significantly more expensive, they take significantly more time than the smaller accounts. So this is not a contract you're approving tonight, all this is, is the response to the RFP. So essentially what you're approving is, you know, we're moving forward with this private entity for this service, we'll come back to you all with a contract, but just in recognition that the consent order says you will either hire an employee on staff to perform these personal property appraisal audits, or you'll contract with a company to do it. And so this is option B, that was in, I believe, paragraph 26 of that contract, that consent order, I'm sorry.
Well, this would be just a one-time thing now for the year, and then it can come up again?
This is a, well, we don't have the contract itself in front of us, I think they mentioned earlier it was a two-year pricing proposal, and so we'll have to, as part of the contract, then we're determining how many accounts will be audited and those sorts of things, we will be sure to communicate with the Department of Revenue and make sure that our contract is going to satisfy their requirements of the consent order. But ultimately, that's our goal as a county, is to satisfy the requirements of the consent order, get out from under that, and just get back to our normal processes.
Does our Board of Assessors or something, do they choose that random num, random, or who's who chooses?
Okay, so they do have a policy, they have an actual policy, and I believe it's included in your notebooks, if y'all will look behind that item number, it's titled, "The Personal Property Audit Verification Policy." And so it actually goes through the process of how the Board chooses certain accounts, and then it also gives what I'll kind of call red flags, that an account could be chosen, so if they fail to file a return, if there's excessive decreases or some other sort of red flag, then an account could be chosen, chosen for that reason.
Then those are the ones, okay, that could be picked from that. Yeah.
So how far do they go back?
Generally, it's three years.
Three years.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Burst.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, so I understand you say that once they go in and, uh, if we were to enter into contract with this, uh, Taylor, that we would have some latitude, or Board of Assessors would have some latitude to bridge accounts to audit, uh, who makes that call?
Well, we'll have, we can detail that through the contract language, but I, you know, and I'll be candid, this is the first contract that we've had under a consent order. Normally, a county would just contract with Trailer individually to provide these services, but in my opinion, it doesn't change the analysis that, you know, the county will still want to comply with our personal property audit slash verification policy. So, you know, that's something we will address in the contract itself as to who's responsible for that, but we will want to make sure that our policies comply with.
Okay. So, and this is, like I said, the basis is pretty much in order of the personal property accounts that we have, right?
Yes, Commissioner Burst, that's accurate.
Okay. And another option would be is to hire someone on staff to do this, and I think we had pretty much kind of ruled that out, I think.
That was my understanding also.
Yeah, you said you can't hire a accountant, professional accountant. Okay. Need any more on it?
You want a bit, you want a motion?
Y'all want a motion, I guess I'm going to ask for a motion to...
Mr. Chairman, I move that we instruct County Manager and County Attorney to work with the, uh, Taylor Business Services Incorporated as a preferred vendor on this personal property auditing services, and return to the commission with a approved contract. Russ, approve it.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I got a motion and a second, any more discussion on it?
Uh, on my discretion, I have, Mr. Chairman, I guess would that be like a projected estimate amount of what, uh, just sort of cost, uh, I know they have it both down pretty much in increments of per account, but, uh, I guess we won't know that until we find out how many accounts we're going to be auditing, right?
Yeah. I'd like to ask, do we know how many they gonna pick from Ware County? I mean, how many would they have to have, 20, 50? Or is there a number, I mean, any?
I do not know that number, and it was my belief earlier, that page referenced, I think it was page five, it does kind of give an estimate of, you know, I think they gave an estimate of 428 accounts, and so then they showed the calculations that they believed if we audit this many accounts, this is what it would cost to do it, and this is what property we expect to discover that ultimately may make it to the county's benefit, that the county would make money instead of losing money on this property, I mean, on this process. But to answer your question, Mr. Chairman, I do not know exactly how many accounts they will audit, and so I cannot tell you exactly the pricing, but we do know the price per account and the price per size of accounts. So we do have that information at this time, and we can narrow down before execution of the contract, exactly how many accounts we'll need to audit in order to satisfy the consent order.
Okay. That's a lot of money, $48,000, to review them, if you do that many, you know.
But if you find property that they haven't been paying taxes on and get the taxes on that.
Yeah.
Probably wind up making money.
And I, I think that's pretty much the whole idea behind this is to order, to make sure that people are paying their fair share, and if they're not, then this would be revenue that would be coming into the Canada that we are not hitting at this time.
All right. Any more?
Hold on.
I got a motion, you got a second. Let's vote on it again. Mr. Burst.
Aye.
Mr. Pope, uh, Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Burner.
Aye.
Chair vote, no. Okay. Alcohol license application, B.
I make a motion that we approve the license as applied for.
Okay, got a motion, you got a second?
Second.
Okay, I got a second. Any discussion on it?
I got one, how far is this supposed to be, that to the closest church? Justin, or either one of y'all?
In a thousand feet.
600 feet.
600 feet from the church.
The Hubbardville Methodist, it'd be just about on the borderline with it, wouldn't it?
Is it within the state limits or the law's limit? The county, is it in, within the limit? The church, I mean, I mean, it's out of the... All right, any more? Okay, let's vote on it. Mr. Burst.
Aye.
Mr. Pope, uh, Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Burner.
Aye.
Chair votes out. County Manager report.
I don't, I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman.
You got any commissioners comment?
Mr. Chairman, if it pleases the Board, under the commissioner's comments, something came up, I'd like to request a short executive session before we adjourn this meeting.
Okay, what's it concerned? Personnel?
Personnel.
Personnel, okay.
I second.
Will just need a formal motion and a second?
I second.
You got a second, okay. Let's vote on it. Mr. Burst.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Burner.
Aye.
Chair votes out. Okay.
How we gonna get him back there?
Now, we can't, we won't adjourn until after due.
That's correct, we'll just step out, but I was thinking, we probably will need to maybe call Commissioner Burst from our cell phone, Commissioner Burst, if you can hear me, if that's fine.
All right, so someone is gonna call me?
I'll call him, I'll call you, Commissioner Burst.
Okay.
Okay.
I get a...
Thank you, Mr. Burst.
I see.
We need a motion and a second to close the executive session.
Okay, I hear a motion to close the executive session.
I made a motion.
Got a second?
Sorry.
Got a second? Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion. The executive session been closed. Okay.
Are we back in regular session?
We back in regular session now. And we back on, we still on commissioner's comment. Any more comments?
Under commissioner's comments, Mr. Chairman, after discussing, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Mr. Brandon Wallace as assistant county manager to give Mr. Moy some help. Details can be worked out by Mr. Moy and then returned with a proposal if we need change or whatever, but Mr. Moy really needs some help.
Okay, we got a motion.
I'll second that.
And we got a second.
We might better ask him if he want to protect position or not.
Wait a minute now, hold on. I wasn't asked about the library position. I was just told to go to the library now.
Brandon, will you accept the position?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have anything the county need you to do to the best of my ability, sir.
With no pay?
No raise. We ain't gonna give you no raise.
Mr. Brandon, we need some, we need some road lights down our road. We need some road lights down our road, neighbor.
Help you soon.
Okay. Let's vote on it. That's the person. We ain't got him back on yet.
He's already hung up.
He'd have to hang up, I think, because obviously coming in.
Okay. Mr. Pope, Mr. Lucas, Mr. Barner, chair vote no. Okay. Any more?
I'm good. I don't have anything.
The only thing I just want to reiterate is the, Mr. County Manager, the commissioners, the roads I spoke of earlier. One, the complaint I actually received today at lunch, he saw my vehicle at a restaurant and called me. And the one I was explaining about a county bus backing into his driveway, and when the county bus backs into his driveway, he has no problem whatsoever with the county bus backing into his driveway. He said what he gets upset about is when the county bus backs into his driveway, the wheels are cut all the way to the right. And the first thing they gotta do is cut the wheels all the way to the left for it to go back out to hit Rale Road. And what it's doing is it's causing a rut in his driveway. And then we got the graders going out there, and the graders' arms reach from the ruts at the county bus, school bus, is putting in his driveway. So the only thing he's asking is when that grader comes in here to do burk or whatever, road or lane, Banks Road, Banks Lane, is just to take an extra five seconds to put a little bit of dirt on that hole that the county bus is taking out of his driveway.
That'd be going on county property, wouldn't it?
Probably. I don't know what you do about that.
I mean, the county bus is the one messing it up.
You can't change the school bus routes unless you pave it or something.
Well, he did say this, though. He did say this, Mr. Chairman. He told me today, he said, whenever y'all come out here to pave the roads, Banks Road, Banks Lane, slash time, whatever, when we get ready to pave them, he said that while they have their equipment out here, he said, I'll just have them pave my driveway, and I'll pay for that. He said that way the bus can continue turning around like they always have. And he'll pay that out of his pocket to get his driveway paved, but he wants to wait because it'll be cheaper on him to do it when they're already in the area. So he wants to wait until they get in the area to do it.
Okay. We'll check, we'll check into that, check, see what we can do.
And the only other things I got to bring up is the, did we ever find anything out about the woman out on Minnesota Avenue, that driveway? Because I cannot find, I've looked it up on several maps and...
I think from what I can figure out, I think Jimbo talked about this a while back, it might have been Jimbo. It's really a unopened, platted road. Because it should have went straight through, but it was never open, and they used it as a driveway.
So what do we do about that when nobody owns it?
Well, you know, it's more of a private drive, but the majority of it, you know, DOT paved it up to the right of way line and then stopped there, but the rest of that's dirt. So what you'd have to do to be able, if you, if you did that, you would have to open it as a road, but there's no street sign out there at all. And so, tells me it's never been open, it's just always used as a private drive.
There's a bunch of alleyways like that around the county that said division that was created that road wasn't never opened.
Yep, there's some in Emerson Park that same way, too.
Mm-hmm, there is.
Anything yet?
Give me a little bit, my brain's getting older. I might think something.
Any more?
I don't.
Okay, I hear a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll make a motion, so moved we adjourn our meeting. Sorry.
Got a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.